So, we are back after about seven minutes after six from an executive session. And we are back in open meeting. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Russo for the hearing that was to be held.
Okay, so, the first agenda item is a public hearing on a Class II license application from UP into 2. It's the name of the applicant. So, because it's a public hearing, there are sort of a few formalities we'll go through. So, the first one is the making sure there was a notice. And in fact, we did have an ad in the paper on February 8th. And as is usually done in public hearings, I'll go ahead and read the notice. "In accordance with provisions of General Law Chapter 140, Article 1, notices hereby given that the Plimpton Town Selectmen or the Plimpton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, February 20, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the main meeting room at the Plimpton Townhouse 5 Palmer Road, Plimpton, Mass. 02367 regarding the Class II application received from UP into 2 Inc. The application and accompanying documents submitted to the town by the owner may be reviewed at the Board of Selectmen's office located at the Plimpton Townhouse during business hours. Any person interested in wishing to be heard on the matter may appear at the public hearing at the time in place designated above." And so, that's the reading of the public notice. And as I mentioned, because it's a public hearing, there are some mild formalities that we have to go through that we might not normally be quite so formal about. So, that's the public hearing. To mention the ground rules, testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be put in to speak at a time. All discussion will go through the chair. Excuse me, all parties will be expected to conduct themselves civilly. So, this is an application process, and so there are two phases. First is the collection of evidence from the applicant and proponents and those wishing to speak in favor. And then, there's the collection of evidence of those opposed to the application. And then, after that, we'll go into a deliberation. So, each person who testifies, we ask that they identify themselves with name and address for the record. So, in the start of that, we welcome the applicant to make a presentation.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I ran in so late. I usually come up at 6:00 in the morning from the Cape where I live and traffic's significantly different at 6:00 to 5:00 at night. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
The, so, I, for example, she explained how to go through the process of this. Basically, UP into 2 is a separate corporation. I also own Training Wheels.
What's your name, sir?
I'm sorry, Eric Siegel.
Okay.
And for, we've been in business for 19 years and there's a, we've been in a lot of different forums. Our students, I know Christine's student advice, but I know a lot of people know what we do. We teach people to ride motorcycles. And we have several locations around Massachusetts. And students often call us and say, can we buy your motorcycles when you're done with them? And the answer is always, no, you don't want to buy our motorcycles when you're done with them. But we understand why, because people are scared to ride with ones that are too big, run out of the class. They really are comfortable in something smaller. So, for years, we've had different sort of versions of helping students with this. And also, to help us, we buy a bike and then we sell it to a student. And then, in the height of the season, we may buy one back, or then we sell in the fall. We tried a lot of different versions of this. It's gotten to a point where people really want to have this happen. So, we have sort of make it, we had to make this like a real thing. And so, we tried an option of making it a leasing company. And insurance companies got all crazy on us. So, basically, we formed UP into 2, which is a motorcycle term. And we're, we sell, we buy motorcycles and we let new students ride them. And then, through the depreciation, we actually buy them back when they're all dinged up and ready to go and put them into the class. So, we do probably 10 or 15 of them a year. And the reason we need to sort of make it an honest thing here, I should say, not honest, but the taxes are just killing everybody. We're paying sales tax every six weeks when we buy and sell one. And also, the titles are taking them a month and a half to get back to us now. So, we decided to make it, to do a used vehicle license to make things run smoother so that we continue to do what we do, but without having to wait for titles and do the sales tax part of it. And the reason I tell you this whole long story about sort of the business model of it is, we don't really see, motorcycles don't tend to go through Plimpton. They sort of go from a student and then to one of our facilities and maybe we clean it up and fix it up and then sell it to another student. But eventually, Plimpton is our headquarters, so that's why we sort of formed it up here. And I know that's, I don't know, I don't know if there's any information I can provide answering questions.
So, what's the address here?
97 County Road.
So, that's where Training Wheels is located? Okay, all right.
So, have you done this, gotten a Class II license at your other locations?
No.
And this would be the only location?
We did a leasing company before. So, my headquarters, I live on the Cape, so I have an office on the Cape. And we did it, the leasing company through the Cape. And that's why we did it for a while. And the leasing company just doesn't work anymore. Insurance companies just don't allow us to do it anymore. It's cost prohibitive. So, this is just another version of sort of what we're doing.
So, you see this as solely selling, we're buying used motorcycles?
Correct.
No cars?
No cars.
And would there be motorcycles on, used motorcycles on the property?
Not for sale. They're, the only used motorcycles on the property are the ones that we use for training. But the ones that are for sale, we put them on our website and sort of structure it that way. They may pass through, because that's where the trailers are, that's where, you know, we clean them up. We use Plimpton Cycle to help us fix them.
And you see no change in your hours of operation?
No.
And signing, or lighting, or any change in any of that?
No, we won't be open to the public for something like this at all. In fact, even now, we're by appointment only for this training.
So, you're not, you're not gonna have any motorcycles really for display? It's just gonna be a web presence?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And you'd be willing to write that into this so that there's no question later?
Absolutely, absolutely. Because I've been doing it, we're doing probably this version of it for eight years, so I know exactly what, how it's going to play out. I don't, I don't want to be in the business of buying and selling motorcycles, quite honestly. We get probably 80% of our referrals from the motorcycle dealerships. The last thing we want to do is start selling motorcycles. So, that's not gonna change. And you'll never see me come back and go, hey, I think we're gonna start doing it this way. It's not, again, I live on the Cape and I have seven locations, and it's not the business we want to be involved with.
You have no affiliation with the cycle shop next door?
No.
Okay, just business?
Just business.
Yeah, okay.
Friends. It's really good, but we're not in business together.
Yeah, okay.
Are there questions?
In order for him to also sell a motorcycle, he has to be a dealer. So, that he needs a dealer number in order to do a dealer number.
He has to have a Class II.
He has to have a Class II.
Gotcha, okay.
Part of the process with a dealer plate with Section 5 is, you need to have a place that you do whatever. You do know that you'll have to advertise, at least have that. Did they come down and do an inspection yet for your dealer?
Uh, no, you mentioned.
Okay, when this is all done. So, like, there will be a sign on his door?
Is that the first step? Or is this the first?
This is the first step.
First step, okay.
I think the sign, the signs are indoor signs.
Right, as long as it's posted somewhere, they're gonna give you all the dimensions and everything.
Everybody seems to have six pages of rules, but there's 20 entities that have rules. So, I went through every one and figured out how to do this and that.
Anything else you want to say?
No.
Okay, or anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? So, all right, so I guess we'll go to the other, the other part of the evidence collecting, which is to see if there's anyone that wants to speak in opposition to the application.
You're not opposed? Oh, okay.
Okay?
I would do the same.
All right, so, the next step is to close the evidentiary part of the hearing. Sorry to be so formal, but one more chance.
You're right, you're right.
Any other questions?
My only question is, is that this requires the address. And where the motorcycles are not actually going to be housed there, I just don't know if that's a technicality, because it says, give a complete description of all the premises to be used for the purpose of carrying out the business. And it's 97 County Road, but the motorcycles aren't necessarily gonna be at 97 County Road.
They, so, 97 County Road is our headquarters?
Right.
So, it's fair to say that they'll be there? Will they be there for six weeks with a for-sale sign on it? No.
Okay.
But that's where we keep things safe.
Okay.
In case you have those, it's a pretty safe place to do things.
Yes, okay, all right, very good. So, that's gonna be basically your headquarters and the vehicles will be going through that 97 County Road. Okay.
The only thing I would like to see is some sort of wording that says, these are not gonna be displayed on County Road, that these are in the setback. I don't know what.
Well, they'd be inside the building, probably. Or storage, do you have storage trailers?
Uh, we do, we do. And then, we have a garage and we're gonna keep some bikes in too. But, um, and, uh, but they, I'm fine putting that in there for storage. We do not want it to be a place where people come in and start looking around. If you're familiar with what we do, it's pretty, pretty serious. 12 people show up and we lock the doors and we don't want anybody coming in. They've got a job to do.
There's enough distractions.
So, I don't know how to do that wording, but.
Well, it would just be no vehicles for display, which we've done that before, because Albies doesn't have any vehicles for display.
Are you all right with that?
Sure, as long as, for display, sure, but I mean, we can keep, as long as you don't have.
Sure, but you're not gonna have them displayed outside and, yeah?
No outside display of motorcycles for sale or something like that.
Okay, okay, perfect.
All right, so, why don't we go ahead and close the evidentiary part of the hearing? Now, we go into deliberation part of hearing. And I think I'm here in general consensus that we would be in favor of this application with the conditions, there'd be no outside display, and that this would be solely motorcycles.
Agreed.
I'm not sure how we word that. Maybe we can impose, or ask Liz to work with town council and get that done, and then formally approve that at the next meeting? Would that be all right?
Do you have a count in mind of the number of bikes that you'll have advertised at any one time?
Ooh.
Because that's probably gonna be something that we're gonna need too. Not to exceed a certain number.
What's your count?
I don't know what we have with Plimpton Cycle, but that's a completely different business, because they have some outside and then they have some in the building. And all the motorcycles, basically, in front of the fence are for sale. The ones behind the fence are ones that they're working on.
What's the maximum you would think you'd have on at any one time?
That's where my head went too. But honestly, if you came out, you wouldn't, nobody would be able to tell the difference between the ones we're using for training and the ones we're using for selling. So, I was thinking the same thing, that we could, we could have 45 motorcycles stored there. I mean, they're tight and there's a nest to it, but you can squeeze them in. I don't need to have that certain, I don't need to write, I mean, 10, I think it would be a safe number.
Okay.
But I have had, you know, at the end of the season, it's conceivable that 10 motorcycles would be sold. I've never, in the eight years we do, I've never seen 10 at once. But 10's the number. And this is, this is, you know, the business has changed in 19 years. This is an effort to keep the business going, so it's, so 10.
So, it's 10 independent of the ones you're using for training?
That's, I'm comfortable with that.
So, there shall be no more than 10 motorcycles for sale at any given time?
For sale, at any given time.
And there shall be no outside display of motorcycles for sale?
Perfect.
Okay.
So, if you see it on our website and you see 11 or 12, I just, somebody can certainly come and visit and I would show them. I'll just talk about it.
Okay.
Are you doing any repair?
We don't do repair on site.
Okay. It's just for selling?
Just for selling.
Buying and selling?
Do you want that written in there too?
I don't think it's necessary.
No, because that would be a different type of license.
If he was going to do repairs.
Right, this is just buying and selling.
So, I wouldn't, no.
Muddy the water, yeah.
So, maybe the way to do this is to signal that we are in favor of this, but that we'll continue the hearing just until we get proper language for the conditions and would make a vote at the next meeting?
It's up to, it's up to you. I mean, I think those conditions, one of the places I worked for prior, the licensing department was under me, and those conditions are very common, the wording. I'm comfortable with that wording, but if you want to.
You're comfortable taking a vote now with that wording?
I think that that's, that's perfectly acceptable.
I'm comfortable.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve this application and that the wording will include words to the effect that there will be no outside display, that the sale of used vehicles will be solely motorcycles, and that no more than 10 cycles will be for sale at any particular time. So, that's a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Great, thank you. It's a great service. It was a great class.
So, I need to sign something here or not?
Uh, once, Liz.
(laughing).
And then, I have three.
I have options.
No, I don't write, I don't do the highway.
I interrupt people in the meeting.
Yeah, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Terrific, thank you!
I do business with nine different towns, and I have to tell you, you guys, you guys are the best. You've heard that before.
Thank you.
I don't know, is that a plus? We should have got more.
Thanks.
Come back.
All right, awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, we closed the hearing.
Who made that motion?
Mike made the motion.
I made the motion to close the hearing.
He made the motion close.
And I said, is everybody in favor?
Yeah. All right.
All right, good. So, now we're onto warrants paid?
Mm-hmm.
Who is doing that?
But, that big number at the top is the, this is the total in here?
Yeah, what's the big one?
It's the police station that things came through.
Oh, okay, all right.
Goodness gracious. You want to, Mike, I think you're the one who was.
So, yeah, the largest part of the warrant was the police station.
So, are we doing something different now? Is this?
So, I, I got some clarification, and I think in order to be in compliance with the Modernization Act, even though only one of you is required to sign them, you're supposed to announce the total at your next meeting.
Okay.
So, meeting to meeting, that should just be a standing agenda item, and we read off the total.
I like that.
Understanding that if anybody has questions about any of this, they can come and inspect the documents during regular business hours.
Well, I think we can, you know, I think we should itemize that, given that the police station was, given the size of the amount.
Yeah, so, it's no different, I mean, normally, I come in midday on Monday, assign all these, or as it is during the week. None of that really changes, but then each Monday, we give the total that we're spending. And this is totally typical, that the police station is, you know, the huge amount of that. So, the total on this is $283,345.82, of which about two-thirds is the police station, which is $264,681. All those, that material is approved by the Public Safety Committee and before it even comes to us.
Right, right, and Liz is also now, we gave her a signatory authority, so she's reviewing them and initialing them before they go to the town accountant.
For ours?
For ours.
For stuff coming out of Selectmen or.
I used the right account number.
All right, so, where's this go?
Go back to Ray.
That way.
Thank you.
Okay, recycling opportunities.
All right, this one I asked, I have on the agenda. We met with Brooke Nash from the Department of Environmental Protection. This was her area of expertise about the recycling in the state and the serious problem that was confronting the towns and how we're really kind of doing a, for the most part, not such a great job with our recycling and putting a lot of products into our transfer station that, as recyclables, which really are not items that can be recycled, and they end up clogging up these facilities that are processing recyclables. And, I mean, it was just a lot of really interesting information. There's, the state is willing to help us with all sorts of grants to help us do a better job with recycling. A lot of it is just increasing awareness.
What would be an instance of?
Well, an instance would be those plastic bags that we get from Shaw's or wherever. Those cannot go in the recyclable. And if someone were to put their recyclables in one of those bags and then throw it into the recyclables, when it gets to the, the station where they process these, they just throw them in the trash. They won't even open up the bag to deal with the recyclables. So, it was basically just increasing awareness about what can go into recycling. Anything that can tangle should not be recycled, no cords, no garden hoses, anything that's long and can clog up the, these processing belts should not be in recyclables. So, they offer, the state offers lots of grants to help us do a better job with mailers, with coming out to the transfer station and actually working it with us, looking at people's recyclables before they throw it in there to say, this is good, this is not good, you cannot throw it in there, you have to take it over and throw it in the, with the non-recyclables. So, there is opportunity to do a better job, and recycling's not gonna go away. It's very expensive, and this might be a way for us to help reduce our recycling costs.
So, what's the next step you want us to take?
Well, the next step would just be talking to the Board of Health and seeing if there's some interest in participating in some of these programs and possibly utilizing some grants to get some help to increase awareness. Because I think everybody wants to do a good job, they just don't know. And they said that, you know, working with the schools and the kids is like the best thing they can do. Because once you get kids trained, it's like they train their adults. So, you know, working with the schools so that kids are thinking about what they're throwing in the trash and what they're recycling, so just doing a better job. All right, so I'll just bring it to Art, see what he says and see if.
Enthusiastic in favor.
That we can save some money.
Anything that I can, that I can take with all this?
You know what, I can give you this, the presentation that we got, and they talk about the IQ kit, and it was really interesting. And because we've done not such a great job of recycling, we've actually lost a huge part of paper recyclables with China, where we, we, they used to buy our recycled paper, and in 2013, they told us we needed to do a better job. There was too many contaminants in with the paper. And we, as a country, did not do a better job. And then, in 2018, they said, we're done, we're not buying your paper anymore. And it really worked out well, because we sent the paper over and they sent the products back. So, now, we're trying to sell the paper to India and other countries, getting a lot less money for it, and it's just, it's a completely different market. So, we just have to do a better job of recycling. And I think we've already lost this with China. I don't think that we're gonna get that back. But also, working to, with manufacturers to reduce the packaging too, so that there's not so much packaging in products that needs to be thrown away. So, that's another part of it too. But yeah, you're welcome to this, Deb. You know, I might have it electronically, you want me just to email it to you? Okay, perfect, I'll do that.
Liz, you wanted to talk about the exhaust system before.
Oh, yes, before I go to Plimpton. So, you had already voted to award the contract to Air Vacuum Corporation. The amount of the contract is $24,662. It's been kind of a long process, but we're ready to come across the finish line. So, I just need a vote to execute the contract with them for that amount.
Okay, I would make a motion that we execute the contract with?
Air Vacuum.
Air Vacuum for $24,662 for the exhaust system at the fire station.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, if John could just sign where it says, accepted, and then I can take that back.
Perfect. How soon will they start?
They said it's probably anywhere from a six to 10-week lead time to get the stuff, but as soon as possible.
Okay.
They may have an opening in their schedule in March, so even if they could get started on the preliminary stuff and then get the system ordered and in there.
Great.
But Finance Committee approved the transfer request for it, so we have the funds available and.
Perfect.
Notice of District Local Technical Assistant Grant.
So, we received notification from Old Colony Planning Council that our application to have them assist us with updating our zoning map, improving the GIS features involved with producing the map and getting it available online, that application for the technical assistance was approved.
How much was that roughly? Did they give you a number?
They don't give you a number, because it's technical assistance, but we'll have the expertise of their GIS manager, as well as one of their main planners, so.
Could you talk to Alan Frazier, because he's also been talking about a software package, and I don't know if it integrates into this?
Um, it's, so it's two different things. What he's talking about is more like a permitting software package. Regardless, the updated zoning map could be a part of that, that you could click on and see it. But this is kind of step one, getting the zoning map user-friendly and available online.
Could we get that in an IT grant, the permitting software?
We've talked about that, and we're gonna look at it, yeah. I think we're eligible now, because we skipped a year.
Okay.
Town meeting preparations, annual special town meeting, town meeting warrants.
So, we just need the board to vote to open both the annual town meeting warrant and the special town meeting warrant.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we open the annual and special town meeting warrant cycle.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing happened.
(laughing) Like a bell or is your gong? Actually, it should be a ka-ching, ka-ching, cash register.
Receipt of zoning bylaw amendment article from Planning Board, marijuana.
So, this is just a procedural item. They had emailed it to us from the Planning Board. It's sort of an odd little quirk in 40A. The Selectmen have to take a vote saying that you are in receipt of this proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and then you actually have to forward it, in this case, back to the Planning Board to start the whole public hearing process.
Okay.
So, I'm glad to make a motion that we acknowledge receipt of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, town meeting, and that we'd like to forward it back to the Planning Board for the Planning Board to commence public hearing process under Chapter 48.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Deb, very much.
2018 Annual Town Report, I assume this was to kick off that they have to be back by March 21st.
Share up in your pencil.
That was it. I'm gonna make sure that, just to follow the guidelines this year, if they send it the right way, because it has to fit in the book correctly, so when you open the book.
Yeah, you shouldn't have to format it.
If they could please proofread, because I did have somebody send a book back to me, correct it.
Nice.
If they could just get that in.
So, were boards, commissions, committees, and the like, good last year on the deadline or?
They were pushing it, but they did pretty well. But some of them were coming in and they weren't the right type, the format, the font was off, the margins were off, so I had to convert them back to the, and I, it was a lot of me doing it.
Lot of formatting.
If they could just follow the guidelines, it would be greatly appreciated.
You know, I wonder if sending out a thing once a week, just reminding people, you know, since we all get a little overwhelmed, but that a deadline in that formatting is more than a formality. I'll just throw it out there.
Mm-huh.
Yeah. I mean, you are gonna have to hold your wholesome hands there, because...
Oh, I, I'll help any, I will help, but I mean, that was really...
Alright, good.
One of them was handwritten.
Where?
Can you whisper who that was?
No.
As part of the warrant...
No, it wasn't, you done.
We have who's up for, and I thought I'd just read these off in case anybody sitting out there would love to run for a board or committee. So, in no particular order, first up is the, we have an opening for an assessor board member. This will be a three-year term. We have an opening on the Board of Health, again, an elected three-year term. We have three library trustee openings. One is for a two-year term. The second one is for a two-year term, it's the filling of position, there's two years left. And the third is for a three-year term. Finance Committee, we have two vacancies, both for three-year terms. Moderator, we have one opening for a three-year term. Planning Board, we have one opening for a five-year term and another for a three-year term. Plimpton School Committee, we have one open for a three-year term. Selectmen, we have one open for a three-year term. And Silver Lake Regional School Committee, we have one open for a two-year term. And maybe next time, we'll read the boards and committees, the appointed ones that are open.
Okay.
But I don't have those right now. So, we'd love to see new faces in here and hope there's people out there that want to get involved in town government. And to the extent that people feel a little bit intimidated, we would certainly mentor anybody who wanted to come forward.
Yeah, I would just echo that. I think not so many years ago, it was a daunting task, but there's so much good continuing education out there, that most of these positions, there's a lot of help.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's good to have experienced people, but I think we're very much looking for attitude and the aptitude will come along the way.
Common sense and be a team player and we'll do the rest.
Fresh ideas, you know? Very good.
Okay. Board Goals, I'm gonna have to take off.
Okay.
Got no power and a wife at home that...
So why don't we, why don't we save the Board Goals for 2019? This'll be the first time we go over and we can start it with the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That's alright.
Sure.
And I feel comfortable you approving the minutes, so I was fine with them what I saw.
Okay.
I really liked the minutes you ruled, Christine.
Thanks. Okay.
I'd like to see that as a full minute.
Okay, alright, so we just have to go through the correspondence and do the minutes, and we'll wrap it. Okay, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll see you in a couple weeks.
If not sooner.
Yeah, if not sooner.
So in correspondence, this is a letter from Scott Ripley, the Highway Superintendent, letting us know that the snow and ice budget for 2019 has been expended and that he's requesting that an emergency be declared so the Highway Department may continue service.
I'll make a motion that we declare a snow and ice emergency.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the only thing, I, I, a question that maybe at some point is, it was a pretty mild winter. And if we've gone through our budget, then I think maybe we have to look at the budget a little bit and try to be a little more realistic.
Right.
Alright, this is a renewal anticipation of a serial loan. This is a loan from 2010 for townhouse renovations, I think. It's already been signed, but I think we need to formally vote on this. So I make a motion that we approve this townhouse remodeling loan renewal.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. Okay. And this is an application from Council on Aging. They want to use the meeting room on May 8th at 11:00 a.m. for some kind of meeting. Pending the appropriate approvals, I'd make a motion this be accepted.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A note from, or a letter, or a correspondence from Eversource that they are intending to selectively apply herbicides along the power line right-of-way. This is something we get every year, nothing new or different there. Not totally thrilled with pesticides in general, but seems to be part of what's necessary to keep things going. So just a notation that we've received that. And because we haven't met in a while, believe it or not, we have five issues...
Holy cow!
Plimpton Halifax Express, with all kinds of good news throughout. I won't highlight anything along the way, other than to say we're blessed to have the opportunity to have that paper...
Absolutely, lots of great articles, good pictures, and a really enjoyable read.
And with great pleasure, can I report that that completes correspondence?
Alright, so all we have are dates to remember is, let's see, next meeting, 3/11, and then 3/25. Both be 6 o'clock starts, unless we need to meet earlier, which we will note in post. We've got open session minutes from 12/17. I had quite a few corrections on these. This was, just minor stuff, like it had me bringing the meeting to order instead of John. And then John's initials are missing. It did say, "BOS and Town Administrator Discuss the Policy and Procedure for the Disposition of Town-Owned Land. TA Sent a Draft for the Process to Departments." I don't think she did that, because we were still working on finalizing the document. So I don't think she did that.
That's already been correct? Isn't that already been done in the book?
No, no, these somehow slipped through.
12, what's the date on that?
12/17? Yeah, I think we couldn't find them, and then, but you had sent them?
Oh, no, oh, those are the ones that kept...
Yeah, these are the ones.
I wonder if, should we wait for John and do, I, I mean, it's been so long already.
Sure, why don't we hold the 17?
You're talking about the disposition of town-owned land?
I think maybe I ought to review it again too, if you found that much stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so let's hold, we'll hold the 12/17 until John's with us.
Liz sent a draft for internal process, a user-friendly version of it.
Okay.
Notification to...
But I think she sent it to us. I don't think she sent it to the, to other boards. Because we were...
Okay.
We had to approve it.
Okay. I didn't go to Colleen in that?
No, I don't think so. I don't think anybody's actually sent it yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I thought you were looking at everybody's input. I thought that was on that, that's why.
Maybe, maybe, so let's wait, we'll hold those, just to be sure that we're right. Okay, so then we've got the minutes from January 28th. Do you have any corrections?
I don't have any corrections, and I would just note, these were done by you and were a really good set of minutes.
Okay, alright, you're welcome.
And I make a motion, they be approved.
Okay, alright, so the 1/28, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, any rants and raves?
You're not too good for this one.
I am too.
Good.
Alright, motion to adjourn?
Yay!
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, see you in two weeks!